And the next office called me today and gave me the phone number for in the city. A while back, A.C. Dumas on his radio station had a lady, a gentleman from Consumers Power, and they said, "We will not be riding around looking for lights that are out." Am I correct? Okay. Now, the problem with our police when we do call them, the police come to the house, they call and knock on the door and ask, "Did you call the police?" So they leave your house and go down to the scene of where everything happened. So now, the drug dealers, the shooters, or the people that threw the rocks at your house, they now know where the police came from. And I've seen this for myself.
This, this, that should not happen.
But it does, and it's been going on for years.
Okay, let me, let me just say, if you want to remain anonymous when you call 911, tell them you want to remain anonymous.
We shouldn't have to.
We have to. They still do it anyways.
Some people don't want to remain anonymous. We have the issue of somebody calls 911, they want a police officer to show up at their door. Other people call and don't want the police officers to show up at the doors. So if we don't know which that is, then we can get that wrong.
People won't call. That's why they do it. They do it so people won't call.
No.
Yes, it is.
We don't, not true.
We went board yesterday.
Sorry.
We went board yesterday.
Give him the mic.
That's why they do it.
I, I would disagree with that. We're not gonna knock on the door and try to cause harm to someone intentionally so that they don't call 911. That's not true.
It is too. You got a room full of people that agree with it outside.
Excuse me. This has happened to me several times. I have called the police department and Woodrow Stanley tried to get the police not to go to the person's house that didn't call. They go to, come straight to your door and said, "Are you surely there?" I said, "Yes." "Did you make a call? Point out what happened and where it came from." This has happened to me three times. I have went, I have two sons that were fascinated. I went to the police department a month before this happened because these fellows was stalking the neighborhood. Rover Kirkland lived right down the street from me. He had that license plate. He went and talked to them. The second time, he said, "You fellows don't live anywhere over here," and told them where they live. And he said, "You're over here every day giving each other a boost. You are stalking somebody." My two sons were here.
Well, you know what? Thank you for pointing that out. And actually, I think we have a meeting set up this week. So I'll bring that up, and we'll try to get that addressed.
And I'm part of Crime Stoppers, and I have been in meetings with them.
Okay. So yeah, I do have a meeting set up this week, the end of the week with them. So I'll bring that to their attention. But the other thing I wanted to bring up.
What's your name?
Willie Root.
Okay. Oh!
Okay.
Um, we were talking about the volunteers and being very careful, and that's something we will be. And they get background checks, so we're, we're not, we're gonna make sure we do a thorough background check before anybody gets to come through and be a volunteer because we don't need to add to the problem. We're trying to address the problem. So we'll be doing that.
My name is Nathan King. Sometimes, you have to put yourself out there. You have to be known. If they want to do something, they know what we're doing in this building right now. They can come and retaliate, and there's nothing we can do about it. So you can't be afraid because the police come to your door. If you don't, if they don't come to your door, how do they know what activity is going on there? They have to come to you to find out which direction they need to go in. But the police is in their car, they don't know everything that's being said to the 911 dispatch.
I'm glad you raised that point because...
It's, it's a whole lot going on, and we're coming together to work together. You gotta take off your afraid suit and put on your tough suit. That's the only way we're gonna win. Hiding ain't gonna help us. That's why we're in this shape we're in now, because we hide. We gotta beat the bad guys with the best way we know how.
Calling the ball bad.
And I appreciate your comments, sir, because it is your community, and people shouldn't be afraid in their community to speak up about what is happening in their community because we can't do it by ourselves. It takes a community effort to turn things around, and we need everyone in the community to be a part of the turnaround.
Lieutenant, if I can ask the audience, when someone else is speaking, please be mindful and respectful. You may not agree with them, but be mindful and respectful and let them finish what their statement is. I have a hand in the back. Thank you kindly.
I just have one question. I'm in the first floor, and I would like to know, do you have a phone number, a way to contact a Blue Bash volunteer?
Yes. Sergeant, Sergeant Meeks is in charge of that, and her number is 237-6824. 237-6824. And if anybody didn't get that, you can see me afterwards. I get it to you. But one more time, it's 237-6824. And if you prefer email, it's T.Meeks, which is M.E.E.K.S@cityofflint.com.
Say your last name.
T.Meeks, which is M.E.E.K.S@cityofflint.com.
It's, uh, good evening. You...
You mentioned about safe social networking analysis.
Yes.
Blue Bash.
That would be computerized, correct?
It's partially. It takes a lot of actual manpower, and that's the crime analyst's part of it, because you can't just say, "Okay, give me the names that pop up the most and say, 'Okay, these are the criminals.'" You have to delve deeper into it to see what the connections are with the crimes and how often they pop up. They might just be popping up as a witness or a victim of crime, not necessarily a suspect involved in a crime.
Okay, so will there be a central computerized system at the police department, or is this something that police cars will have in their vehicles? Where, where would this network be?
The social network analysis is done by a crime analyst, and then that information is put out to the cars over flyers at the station or through the new Street Smart software. The Street Smart software is the software that we would have in the cars to, for the ongoing communication between the different bureaus and different squads about the crime occurring.
So when, you, you said this is all being funded by the MOC Foundation. When this grant runs out, and let's say we, we know that technology changes on a regular basis, how will this particular network be updated to keep track with our technology changes?
At this time, I don't have that information. The grant is for three years, so we'll be utilizing it through those three years, and we'll have to reassess whether or not to continue it, if it was fruitful, and there is a need to continue it, and where those funds might come from.
And, okay, and the other thing, we're gonna wrap up on public safety, but there is a meeting Thursday. Where is the meeting Thursday? Right back here with RoofMOC to answer some of those questions, if you do have questions about that. But I know, when I was at one of the meetings, they said that that technology is going to be ours. So it's not like they take it and they're gone in three years. That's going to be ours, so we'll be able to work with it. But you know, it was interesting because when I was meeting with, I can't remember if I was meeting with the president from U of M or MOC, but we were talking, I was talking with the police chief about some of the technology, and that's one of the areas where we do need help. And we talked about working with the colleges and the universities to offer the kinds of classes that we need to have people be able to stay here and work here and help us out right here. So we're looking to do some of those kinds of things. What, what do we need our young people to learn so they can come back and help us right here? And that was one of the areas we looked in. So I do wanna say that. And like I said before, we don't have all of the answers for public safety, and we are taking your concerns. I expect this to be a continuing dialogue and discussion, and that's why we're here is because I wanna know what's going on, and I wanna hear, you know, what you all are upset about, and I shouldn't even say you all, we, because I live here too. And, well, you know, what we need to do to make things better and make things safer for Flint, because we know if we didn't have the water issue, public safety would be one of the, the number one issue because it's something that we're not happy about. But we are trying to be proactive. RoofMOC has come in. We are going to be doing this community policing. So I hope people will continue to come to the meetings that we're having so we can continue this discussion. And like Captain Golden said, we need people to help us with it.
And Congress City Council.
That's right.
That's what I was gonna say. We still are heading into the new budget year. We know that you've got some concerns with the detective and the undercover officers. We looking at that, and we trying to fix it. When you do have a situation, we had one on Orange Lane, if you remember. We called, and people went in there undercover, and you know, I hate to say it, but some folks went to jail. We've had a series of break-ins on Holmes and Russell right now, and we got two suspects. So when you hear people saying that they don't wanna be known, that's why I walk around and pass these cards out. Remember, I don't wanna be known, but I got a job with them. When you don't wanna be known, call, and let's see what we get done.
I wanna join.
So I'd like, I'd like to know how, how the RoofMOC funds are going to make a difference for the Blue Bash program and the Radio Patrol. These programs have, the Radio Patrol's been going on for over a year. The Blue Bash program's been going on for, for about three years or more. I've only been back for about three years. How, how are these funds gonna make a difference for those two programs?
With the opening of community service centers in the neighborhoods and communities of the North End, we're hoping that will get people more involved in their community when they have a service center right in their neighborhood and community. It's not on the other end of town, or it's not downtown. It's right here in your neighborhood and community, and we're hoping that will help bring more people into the program.
So will they be paying for these, for these facility centers? Will they be paying for these, uh, the communities, community facilities to house the NSOs?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know, I don't have the line item of what exactly the grant pays for, but I know that the grant calls for opening five community centers. I don't know what is paid for or isn't within the grant.
Well, that's been on the agenda for over a year.
One more question.
I'm Mrs. Mother Maze. And I'm just going to say this. It may be out of line. I don't know that much about politics. You'd think I would, with who I live with. But he's constantly with other politicians talking about things, and I don't, but what I am is, I gotta say this, and I hope I'm not out of line, because I love you all. I'm Christian, and all these issues that we're talking about, and all the things that we're talking about, and I'm sure I'm happy to have our new mayor. I honor all the people that are doing anything to help the city of Flint, because I believe the city is coming back. Sunday at church, my pastor preached on, "You ain't seen nothing yet." I remember the house prayer Pastor Kenneth F. Stewart, and he said, with the revelation, "You ain't seen nothing yet." And the Bible is saying what all we're talking about right now. If my people who are called by my name would humble themselves and pray and turn from their wicked ways and see my face, then I'll hear from heaven, and I'll heal the land. See, God got to come in, because we don't know how to solve all these problems without Him. And like Pastor said, "You ain't seen nothing yet," but you got to trust God.
Okay, I know we ran over a little bit with our water and with our public safety, because I did wanna have Ms. Henderson, and I was told we had to be out of here, done at seven. But I do wanna have her come forward because she was gonna talk a little bit about what we were looking at for economic development. And so while we'll be quick with it today, we'll continue it the next time. So if you can come on up here, please.
Ms. Henderson, please give your name and your title, the individual, we wanna know who you are, what do you do?
Okay, I'm Natasha Henderson, the city administrator. I oversee the operations reporting directly to the mayor, council, and the R tab, primarily to the mayor. As far as economic development, that's something that I would definitely say has been a challenge. I have been here since February, the 23rd of, of last year, so, um, well, I know it was this year, I'm sorry. I know it seems like a year. It seems like, okay, I'm getting my, my cycle's mixed up. Sorry about that, I apologize. But it's, there are definitely challenges. And I will say that the negative press out there about the water does not help as far as recruiting companies to relocate to the city of Flint. So that's why I am committed to working with the mayor to try to restore the public, public confidence in administration, and that would be, that would be inclusive of people being confident that we are providing safe drinking water, and that we are doing everything in the best interest of the city to ensure that that happens, that we are going above MBEQ and EPA standards. So just wanted to mention that. But what we do have going on as far as economic development at this point, with the, the new mayor, she has become the board member of different organizations that will give us that voice on those boards. One example is she is a, the chair and the chair of the DDA Board, which is the Downtown Development Authority. So she will have a lot of say in what happens even past that corridor, so, which is, is really good on to the north side as well. So that is something that we will have. And then also with working with the, the chamber, she obtains a seat with the chamber on that board to work to talk about the things that the whole community wants as opposed to things that are more centralized, and that is something that I've heard since being here. Also, we do have a partnership with the chamber. We have someone that is located within the mayor's office suite, so if someone's trying to start a business, they can come directly to the mayor's office suite and ask for that person, and that person works basically as a caseworker, and they can tell you what you need to do and talk about the resources that we have available. Also, the mayor and I have talked about with the CDBG funds, a lot of our CDBG funds are due to capacity. We, a lot of those funds go to, a large, large fund that goes to other organizations to basically administer those funds. But what we've been thinking about is we want to promote home ownership in the city of Flint, and we have so many young people here that we can, with our CDBG funds, if a person qualifies, it doesn't have to be a home of our choosing, meaning the city's homes or a home that, just say is in Smith Village, it could be anywhere in the city of Flint, and we would have the ability to give the homeowner up to $7,500 of down payment. So those are some of the things that we're talking about as far as economic development. We are at a point right now that we have to be very creative, very strategic as to how we do those things. So those are just a few of the things that we are looking at. We do have our planning and development committee meetings, the third Wednesday of every month. Councilman Eric Maze is on that committee, and he definitely drives economic development. He wants me to find a million dollars to put into that. I, that's not something that I've been able, able to deliver right now, but that, I mean, but, but all joking aside, it does say that, I mean, there's some great ideas about economic development and things that we can do, but I try to focus on the things that actually can be done, and that is something, it's gonna take people moving to the city of Flint. We don't want people to move outside of the city of Flint. We need more people to move in the city of Flint. And I know with myself coming to Flint, I was committed to living in Flint, and I would say I love living in Flint, and there are a lot of areas that I go, I meet a lot of people in Flint, and I party with a lot of people in Flint, and I'm having a great time, so. And I think that we, a lot of people talk about how great it was to come to Flint, and I was in Mesquite when moving here, and that's what I want to get back, because that is still here. Flint is a great place, and I see that, and I'm an outsider, and I want a lot of people on the inside to start seeing that again for the city of Flint. So as far as economic development, we are working on that. We have the partnership. Anyone that wants to start a business, I would say, come to the mayor's office suite and ask for, what? Karina. Karina. That is her first name. I don't have her last name. But she is located there, very pleasant, and loves to work with individuals. She can even work with you on getting loans if it's a small business. Small business is the largest growing sector. That's where a lot of the jobs are created. Most jobs are being created in the small sector, small business sector. So a small business, that's a great thing, thing that keeps communities together, so if we can help with that, especially with even the, the strategy that we have with the North End, bringing mobile stores back, bringing your community, making communities walkable and making it safe, that's what helps, is to be able to have those smaller businesses in communities, and that is what makes a community what it is, and getting back to that. So that is something we're focused on, and we're trying to utilize the resources that we do have to be able to do some of those things and bring, and start administering those things within, in-house as opposed to sending our dollars, CDB job dollars, outside of the city and administering those things there and getting the capacity there to do it.
You know what, and actually, that made me think about something because I was in a meeting, and when we were talking about businesses, they were saying that there's going to be, we're really looking at and trying to direct funds for people that wanna live in the place where they do business. So that is going to be coming up, and that's something that we can look forward to. I know we're gonna have some more good news next week, so you just have to wait for that. But also, what we're looking forward to, since we're talking about what we have to do for economic development, we know we need to address these issues that we've been talking about. And I'm looking at, right now, the speed, because I know we're gonna be doing work, we're, we're working with the Land Bank, and we're gonna be doing some things that I think people will be really happy about, that will be coming in the near future. And I also see Dr. Laura Sullivan. She's back here, and she was the other KWA appointment. She doesn't see, hear me, but I wanted her to stand up so people could see who she is. Dr. Sullivan. She's the, the new appointment. She's the catering engineer that I was talking about that's going to be looking out for us on the KWA board. So I'm glad you could be here this evening, and I wanted people to know who you are. I don't know if we do have any filters left, but if we do, you know, people need to go back there. I know we have some announcements, and I'm not sure if, oh, we have some announcements for people, so come on, Mr. Dumas.
Thank you. Let's give the mayor a round of applause. She actually, she's done, this is her, her party. This is not my party. I'm just gonna be...
I'm done. I wanted to tell everybody thank you for coming, because it's so nice to see such a nice big crowd out here tonight. But I'm gonna let you make these announcements.
I just wanna have a few observations we'd like to make. First of all, the mayor's first open door meeting will be January the 6th, 2016. Sign-in sheet is at 9:00 a.m., and she'll begin seeing residents and citizens at 10:00. Again, mark that on your calendar. January the 6th. Sign-in is at 9:00 a.m., and she'll begin seeing citizens at 10:00.
Where is that at?
At, at City Hall. At the mayor's office. At City Hall, that 01 South Saginaw Street, where you pay your water bill. Right down the hall. Or you don't pay your water bill, but it's still down the hall. And, 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 mayor and Ms. Henderson, Ms. Henderson said they want you to pay your water bill. All right, the second one is that on December the 19th, the mayor is having a free Prayer Fellowship Breakfast, and that's at Christ the King Catholic Church, and that's located on the corners of the Pier Road and Seymour Street. Again, December the 19th, and that starts at, what is that what time?
9 o'clock.
9 o'clock. Free. S-F-R-E-E. Also, on the second and fourth Monday of each month, the Flint City Council have their council meetings, and it starts at 6:00 p.m. And so you're invited, if you have, you can speak if you have issues that you want to speak about. You can go to the Flint City Council meeting from 2:00 on the second and the fourth Monday of each month. In the back, we have a resource table, and the ladies can raise their hand. All way in the back, stop by the resource table and see how they can help you with every resources that you need. And last but not least, Ms. Deborah Holmes, she is the center director at Brennan Community Center. So you can sign up over there, you can sign up here, and I think wherever you sign up, they'll be good. And as Councilman Maze said, this is how our centers get their funding. Thank you, mayor.
I just wanted to let people know we were gonna stop a few minutes early because we are aware of the time, and I know there were some people that we needed to get with afterwards, so we wanted to allow time for that to take place, and I don't know, where do you wanna, come to the back, come right here? But we wanted to make sure we had time for that, so that's what we're going to do.
Hey, I appreciate y'all coming out, but this was Mayor Weaver's day. Let's give yourself a round of applause for coming out. Tuesday at 5:30, it'll be that grant application thing here. Pastor Yarborough was the first person in charge of economic development. Pastor Yarborough was the first person in charge of economic development to give me my funding. Ms. Weaver, Mayor Weaver might should put him back in charge. We got money when he was there. Thank you for coming out. He don't, he don't, she says she, the mayor don't say, but she don't have the ability. Well, I'm glad this was her day because I would still be talking.
Let's bow for one moment. Eternal Spirit, mighty God, we thank you for the privilege of coming before your throne. Thank you for our mayor. Thank you for this opportunity to get new understandings. Now we ask you to strengthen up for the journey, that you would take us safe to our homes and our destinations, recognizing danger knows no distance, and we can't even find the door without you. Let the words of our mouths, the meditations of our hearts, find acceptance in your sight. For our God, our strength and our redeemer. Amen.